Okay, thank you. All right, welcome. Tonight is February 22nd. And not only do we have a regular supervisors meeting, but we have a bunch of things to happen tonight. It's our Person of the Year presentation of the checks to, let's see, Russ Fisher, there he is. Mr. Mahuski, where's Sue? There she is, nice to see you. And Dr. Brown couldn't make it tonight. And we have all the elected officials here, so thank you so much. And we have our staff here, they're excited to present their annual preview of the upcoming year. So, welcome and please join us in the pledge of allegiance. And thank you all for coming and to break the ice a little bit. Well, first, do I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Motion.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes of February 8th?
Okay. Second?
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And now we're up to the check presentation for the Persons of the Year. There will be an opportunity at the end for photos with everyone. And we have lovely party gifts for everyone tonight. So, don't be so quick to run away. So, first, to break the ice a little bit, we're just going to take, take a quick view of our Person of the Year and Person of the Year finalists. So, congratulations to Russell Fisher, who is Person of the Year. Russ, you could just give away Dr. Marilyn Brown and Sue Mahuski, who's also a finalist for Angels and Dragonflies. So, Russ Fisher was selected as Person of the Year for his work with Ballard. And the three words that describe him are compassionate, dedicated, and resourceful. That's what every nominee uses to, on their nominations. They choose three words that describe the individual. And you can read some more here about the Ballard clinic. And Russ, when you come up to accept your check, if you'd like to say a few words, you may also do that. Dr. Brown is not here tonight. The three words that described her: energetic, dedicated, and loving. And she was, her cause was the Greater Pocono Section. And in one of the most generous things that we've seen, she actually split her donation with Angels and Dragonflies with Sue, as well as to other organizations. And then here is Sue. Angels and Dragonflies, Sue Mahuski. So, thank you so much for all you do for the community. And we wanted to give a shout out to the judges and to thank them for all they've done throughout this process. Patrice Janey actually worked at Middlesbrough Guild Township and is now with ESU. And we wanted to thank our elected officials for taking the time to mail for the event and to support what we do here. So, not everybody was pictured because we aren't as organized as we are tonight to try to get pictures of everybody at the same time in the same place. It's kind of like a family Christmas photo, but we wanted to give a shout out to all the elected officials as well. And we couldn't, we couldn't have this without our lovely sponsors, some of whom are here tonight. So, thank you to SFL Consulting as the platinum sponsor. And Gilmore, who is our engineer, Ben, thank you for being a gold sponsor. And also Grimbean and Thatcher, who is our solicitor. Thank you very much, Pat, for being a gold sponsor. And Chili Insurance, Huffman's Electric, and Tag DJs. And those are our three Person of the Year and finalists. So, I'm gonna stop sharing the screen for a moment because now what we're going to do is a check presentation. If I come forward, we'll stand like in front of the, you know, make a semicircle around that television screen there. Because if you, if we stand this way and face that way, Zoom will capture all of your butts. So, I'm sure that that's not your best equipment. Not exactly what you were looking for. So, we have elected officials here to celebrate you tonight. So, April from Congressman Cartwright's office. And Mackenzie from Senator Brown's office. And Tara Probst couldn't be here tonight, but she has something for you two. And James will be representing Senator, excuse me, Tara Brown, Tara Probst's office. Maureen Madden, I don't see Jacob here. Perhaps he's on the way. And we have commissioners. We have our Monroe County Commissioner Sharon Labrador and Dave Parker here. So, welcome and thank you. So, at this time, would you like to come forward, Russ Fisher? So, and then Board, would you join me over to the side, please? Oh. I messed it up already, I was supposed to call you first, Sue. So, come on, okay, I have to go around the side. So, yeah, come on over and we'll give you your check. And also, yeah, just make a semicircle in front of the, around the thing. Excuse me, I have to figure out which one is, is. I need my new glasses very desperately. Can I die? Thank you. So, James also, yeah. So, Sue, we wanted to give you your check. What we'll give is we'll present Sue. James has something for each of you also. And then we'll call up Russ. And then I believe the elected officials have something for Russ, right? And so does James. And then the elected will all come up for your, your photo. So, James?
Sure. So, this is just from the township, it's from the medical. We just have some photographs of you that we're taking. And we also have your speech. So, you have that? So, you have that.
Sorry.
Moralize.
I didn't follow.
But I need to communicate that, so thank you so much.
The ones that she can actually pass, I could be a part of what you want. So, thank you so much for all you know. So, and like I said, at the end, there'll be a photo box, so all of your lessons can be with the, with the photos. Okay, so Sue, why don't you have a seat for a moment? We'll embarrass Russ the same way. So, Russ, if you want to, if you want to say. Yeah. So, James has something, we all have.
Well, again, this is just a medical from the township. It's your speech in its entirety and some pictures, yes, you can.
Yes, a nice, there's a nice eight-minute presentation on here from the whole event. From, you know, when you enter the Oscars, you have a little, here's what happened. And then there's your entire speech there. And then there's some photos of the event. Sorry. So. And, and the thing we came here for is chat. Oh, Mark Maylis?
Yeah.
Would you like to present the check? Is there, is there anyone that is missing a citation?
There is, too. I have to.
Yeah, I think, so now Congressman couldn't make the, the event when we had it. So, but we've got a couple here with.
One for her as well. But yes, thank you, Russell Fisher, for being such a wonderful member of our community here in Middlesbrough Township and officially Person of the Year. Yeah. And I must say, it must be fierce competition because you have so many wonderful and dedicated people in the community. Yeah, you're very welcome. And for Sue, for being the nominee in this process and for your work with children. Thank you so much for all that you do, it's really great.
Royal Malice Day for the preview of 2024, we appreciate it. But there's a lot going on at this time. If you'd like to come up and we'll take something.
Sorry, so, what do you care for? Representative Probst could be here, honestly, she was our accident and she was advised not to drive. She's behind, but she asked the council to present to you the official citation for your Women of the Year. So, we wanted to make sure you could see that.
So, it's a lot of, why don't you read it, there's a lot of whereas.
Whereas, the House of Representatives, the House of Representatives, the individual, subtly, well, that's how, change. There thousands. It's a great pleasure and proud achievement. That's where you, for dedication, community service, it's also a sacrifice and an element of the digital success of the dedication of the art. Whereas, one, such a individual. And now therefore, the House of Representatives, the Council of Pennsylvania, a tribute to Russell on being awarded first with the Year for Middlesbrough Township. Offered best images for continued traditional effects on service. Have to keep peace among those people, that's all I can say. Tara Probst, I'm pretty much on set, comes on before, we transferred it to Russell Fisher. And I hope he's feeling better.
We, we thought, and this incidentally is why we always do the event. Because you see how humble they are. So, they don't take credit for things and they don't shine a light on themselves. So, the whole idea of Person of the Year and the finalists is so that the township shines a light on the people that are doing the good things. We just had an incident today where somebody was talking about, you know, this happened and that happened. And then someone else chimed in and said, yeah, but on the good side, we have somebody like Russ, you know. Who doesn't? So, that, that's why we do this. Because we are putting our voices and our marketing power behind two good organizations, three with Dr. Grant, you know, to let people know what's happening all the year. So, because people tend to talk about, it's good that they talk about this. They tend to talk about the other things. So, you're gonna hear a lot from us tonight. Mark, Mike, do you have anything that you'd like to say at this time?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, you're so. So, since you'll be hearing from us a lot tonight, we thought we'd turn it over to the elected officials, if you'd like to come out and congratulate. And say a few little, able, thank you for coming.
We'll just grab, I can't, we might get our, our family photo. Yeah.
Congratulations. Thank you.
What are you trying to tell them?
I'll start off.
Yeah.
Thank you. I think the most important thing is, thank you. For you two, for Munder County and for Middlesbrough Township and for the young people and Ballard, our veterans also. I mean, we don't really, you know, when I have, I have two brothers that served. One with, one with this and one is not. But the work, what they did and the, for, for our folks, our veterans, the, the, the kitchen conversations my mother used to have when I was growing up about what my brothers would send home to my mom and dad was unbelievable. I mean, those kinds of things and the work that you do. And you, and I know you work with children and, and families. Well, the families have the children, I understand. Being a retired educator, you can't, there's not enough. There's still more to be done. And so, we thank you both for what you're doing for Lunder County. For Lunder County, but Middlesbrough also.
Hey, I remember I can see with Senator Rosemary Brown, but I know she was happy to be here at the banquet for you guys prior. She, she's in Harrisburg, so I told her I'd come for her tonight, so she didn't rush home. But so happy to be here and acknowledge the outstanding work that you both have done in our community. And I think Annette said it so well, so often when you have somebody who has the character of giving and, and being selfless in our community, we don't want the spotlight. But it is wonderful and really commend Middlesbrough Township too for, for bringing the light and showing all the wonderful work that people do. We need to be reminded of that. And, and you guys have done fabulous work, so thank you for that.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much. And now you're going to get to hear from the awesome staff. Oh, okay, first of you. Did, did you folks want to recess or do you want to hang out a little bit, elected officials? Or to the? Yeah, in a few minutes, we'll be there anyway. Pat, have you got a report on executive session for?
There hasn't been no executive session discussion since your last meeting. Get on over.
Thank you. I believe, I'm gonna stop sharing the screen now because I believe that we have, we now have public comment on non-agenda items. And I, anybody on Zoom? Does anyone on Zoom have any public comment on non-agenda items? And I see a hand raised by NJ Stillmeyer. Can you unmute yourself or Michelle, are you able to unmute her?
Oh.
I did. Annette, is this the right time for me to make my comment or do I have to wait till the end of the meeting?
No, we wouldn't dare make you wait till the end. So, yes, this is the appropriate time. If anybody has any comment on non-agenda items.
Okay, thank you. I'll jump right in because I don't want to waste your time. Thank you for the opportunity to bring this to the Board's attention, it's a request. I'd like to add one sentence to the chapter 150-2 scope of the short-term rental ordinance. I've sent it to Annette earlier in the month, I believe that she sent it to the rest of the supervisors. If it's okay, I can read the sentence that I'd like to add.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. At the end of bullet point A, I'd like to add this sentence that says, "If the subject property is located within a homeowner association, compliance with HOA's rental policies may take precedence over this ordinance." I feel that that would make it more clear to short-term rentals who want to have a new rental in the Middlesbrough Field Township section. I appreciate the fact that on your rental policy website, you do have a statement that it does tell prospective short-term rental homeowners that they should check with the, with the HOA or the POA before they even apply for a permit. But since it's not in the actual rental policy, I think it, sometimes they maybe forget about that. And then they come into the association and then suddenly it's like, oh, I didn't know that I had to abide by rules of the association in addition to the township. So, I'm asking respectfully that the supervisors please consider adding that one sentence to the ordinance. Thank you.
You're very welcome. And you are in luck because we actually have the zoning department in its entirety here.
Great, great, thank you.
So, because your, your sentence was forwarded to the zoning department. I don't see Myra though. Do you remember? She did add something to the application, yes? Mark? Yeah, so while it's not added to the ordinance, it is added to the, to the application, the short-term rental application.
Is that available now on the, on the application website?
We haven't, Mark hasn't looked at it yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I don't want to go into my email now.
Can I ask you something?
Yes, ma'am.
We do, we do make sure that people, when they do call in and ask about short-term rentals, we do make sure we tell them that they need to check with the HOA to see if it's allowed and what their rules on. We verbally tell them also.
So, and I remember Myra had added that to the application part. So, I don't want to exit out of this and check our website now, but I believe it's there now.
Okay. If that's okay with you, Annette, I can check later on and then get back to you in a few days. There. That would be great, thank you very much, every little bit helps.
You're very welcome. Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? Yes.
Hi, everybody, my name's Tony Salem. I actually wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I couldn't resist the, the appetite of all the elected officials here. I've actually spoken to a lot of you by now. And in light of the short-term rental topic that came up, I'd like to ask the Board again, please, if you consider the zoning, allowing the STRs and R1 especially. I did ask you guys in our last discussion, I did do as you told me to. So, my request for the police reports is denied because apparently you need a subpoena for that, even if you're the one that called about it. Shot to me, but that's news. I did apply, I did put in the FOIA request application though, even though I know I'm gonna get denied. I just wanted to do what I could. I applied to the planning board, like you said, I understand that somebody's being elected tonight for that. Awesome, that's great, but, you know, I wanted to do that again. I also called the Wase Authority to get their complaints, again, without FOIA. Though, it's not, without subpoena, you can't. So, I'm at a dead end right there. But again, to the larger issue, I really don't care about the Airbnb specifically for me not doing it for the greater good of my neighborhood and my road. It's a private road. The township is forcing us to take up a liability that we just don't want, plain and simple. As I read chapter 200 of the zoning, as I understand it, at a very ignorant point of view, the reading for me, the STR fits in R3 and C1 at best, not, you know, R1, RR, R2. It doesn't promote traditional neighborhood values to have a new neighbor every year. The fact that on chapter 150, I noticed that there's 179-day limit in residential areas, to me, denotes that there's kind of already a known problem with it. Start with, and again, on a private road, it's even worse because it's completely our problem. When I spoke to Senator Brown, she made a point to me that if the township is going to continue to do this, we really should have a 24-hour compliance response. You know, if there's some sort of a zoning officer or anybody that can be available 24 hours a day because the police won't respond, as they told my eight-year-old neighbor to go take care of herself at midnight, which was appalling to me. Yeah, that's it, I've spoken to quite a few of you, I don't know if I remember you guys, but after I spoke to Mr. Parker, I realized that I actually work on most of your neighbors' houses. It didn't dawn on me, and you know our neighbor, Jen Stillmeyer, as well. So, I thank everybody, sorry to waste any time. And congratulations to the people who are here, especially for us all there.
Thank you, and thank you for following me. Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items from anyone tonight? Okay. And next we have correspondence. And I would ask, like, if you could ask Mike Pinter to submit his comment as an email or something, and we can have that as correspondence next time.
Okay.
Okay. And that brings us to the preview of 2024. Let me just, one last check for the folks on Zoom. Huh? I've got no announcements, we don't have that. And the, yeah. I haven't announced. Yes, ma'am. I did want to say. Do you have a public comment on a non-agenda item? No, I actually didn't announce. Okay. Bushville, Oregon, the board is partnering with the township. We're offering a hands-only CPR class next Tuesday evening at the. Okay, thank you. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, folks on Zoom, one last check. Do you have any public comment on non-agenda items? Okay. So, that brings us to preview of 2024. So, I will start sharing my screen now. And the staff enjoys doing this every year, you could see how thrilled and excited they are. Feel free to ask them any, any questions. So, they worked very hard to put this together so that the taxpayers can see what projects were on the agenda coming up for this year. All right, so we always start with layout, our priorities this year. And again, we don't read everything that's on the slides. Because the folks at home can do that on their own. But we always like to include our vision and mission statement. We also like to include a list of events so you can see what's happening. You can check this out on YouTube when it goes live too. Because then we'll be able to grab this. And thank you, James, for always getting these up. So, we'll start with operations first. And for communications, we're just gonna do a quick summary. We do have our direct mail, quarterly newsletters, and our business directory. And most of you are familiar with our website. It was brand new and launched last year. Our social media, you could check because there's a page for every kid that we run. So, HOA message boards all around the township. Our resident welcome, which we invite not just new residents, but they are first. And then when we discovered that we were getting 800 second house sales a year, we decided that's 800 new people, you know, new families a year, and why not welcome them in? So, we. um, we we do that twice a year. Uh, text caster so you could be informed and get text messages on different things. What's new is the community map that's on the way. Um, so James and Holly will be doing that and it wouldn't be a um, presentation without a public service announcement. Here are your four new voting districts and the new places where uh, you get to vote. So again, um, you can look at this uh, later when we post this. So um, Kylie, would you like to, this is our director of first impressions, Kylie Medrano.
Hi, I have stated, I am Kylie. Um, this year, uh, I kept a visitor log, uh, total of one thousand six hundred seven visitors. I was the uh, interim senior department manager and helping with other departments, space, like profits and events. Um, so like I said, uh, January third to December twenty ninth, uh, one thousand seven hundred thirty nine visitors. Lots of them were for zoning. Um, you can see from the charts uh, with the department totals and then the chart at the bottom shows the busiest month for each department. Next. Um, these are some miscellaneous numbers, fifty eight yard sale per yard sale permits were issued and there were eleven news articles covering Middle Smithfield Township uh, about our new Marshall Street historical marker, um, our local uh, LST service tax. Um, this year, January through November of last year, I apologize, twenty twenty three, uh, two hundred seventy three new welcome packets were mailed out. So as Annette had mentioned previously, um, welcome packets are sent out on a monthly basis. Um, and have personalized letters. Uh, if properties are on the systemic system, if they're on our shore system, lots of informative flyers and information about things going on within the county.
Thank you, Kylie. And now, uh, since Myra handles the short term rentals, um, you'll be passing the torch over to Myra to get all these packets out. Right? So human resources, that would be you, Michelle.
Hi, everybody. I'm Michelle Kwo. The um, HR department has been very busy. Last year, we started a Myra program and it's under the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, partner between the PAG Department of Labor and Industry. And it is a summer program. Employees are hired. We have one employees last year at no cost to the township. They work with employees that are currently here in public works as well as administration. Like, you know, landscaping, inventory, um, helping out with whoever owns the packets and just seeing what reception and some of the other departments um, do on a daily basis. And we do expect four new students this year. Wellness program is a continuation from last year. We have the KOA Foundation to personalize digital support group that is uh, activated on your phone. So I did take a uh, brief test through Google Play to see what kind of apps are out there and a lot of them, there are a lot going back to the KOA Foundation, you know, if you're feeling happy, if you're feeling sad, mindful, um, gives you like five, ten minute uh, training to do things just to do on your own. Well, the leadership for twenty twenty four is Kylie Madon, Kylie Madon. Myra alone is not here and we can help. We started the program in two thousand nineteen. Uh, we have Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Education Institute that is open to the employees, the zoning department, zone hearing board and planning of mission. And other organizations, uh, PaySats, annual conferences in April. There are a lot of employees, public works. One day or two days out in Persia. And they're like forty five minute to an hour uh, classes that, you know, it's refreshing courses for something new. So you do learn something new every time you go out.
Thank you, Michelle. Sure. And uh, our budget and finance manager is Shane.
No, she couldn't do it.
So now we will have my
Yes, so I'm not on him, so don't judge your computer. So basically in twenty twenty three, we had a relatively good year. Um, some ups and downs, but quite honestly, uh, we came within percentages of our target as well with income being slightly higher and our expenses were slightly lower than projected. So all in all, it was a good year. Uh, presently, uh, we're going through our twenty twenty three audit that just commenced within the last week or so. Um, we have a twenty four budget posted on the website. Um, the new what's new in twenty twenty four is the fire tax and the EMS tax. So we'll speak about that in a second, but we want to highlight that we're also going for grants. Yeah. Um, the number of grants, one hundred eighty thousand for solar panels, ten thousand for uh, acoustic equipment, twenty thousand for sewer lines, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All in all, uh, I would say the township will probably go for what about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty four. And if any more, you know, come available, uh, I think we're pretty impressive with each department of the township to chase down any grants that become available and sort of fit the projects to the grant. Um, and and honestly, uh, you know, we we as we've done in the past, we'll only do the project if we get the grant. We don't go ahead and, you know, hope for the best. We wait until we actually have the money in hand or for committed. So and then the next thing everyone has noticed, uh, this year we have fire tax and the EMS tax. Uh, we've been speaking about this for a number of years now. Um, basically, um, both fire and EMS um, have needs and their costs are bound up just like everybody else's. Uh, and to meet those needs, uh, we felt it appropriate, we spoke with our neighbor in townships and instituted uh, point five bill, uh, uh, fire tax, point four bill, EMS tax. Um, we're we're hoping that that those are good numbers. This is our first year of doing it, so we're working with our providers to see, you know, how that that all shakes out. Um, we're working with JLN who is uh, a vendor out of Connecticut uh, that did a study of our local fire and EMS. Uh, so we're we're in the process of finally do that. And and then we'll definitely just express with our providers. So really, um, the other thing she has here is her new time and attendance and payroll. Is no matter where we go at home. Um, but she's all excited about that. So um, that should be installed this year as well. That's all I have. Back to the bottom.
And Joan is fishing. Also, uh, so um, I will present her part on sewer. Um, whoops, sorry, man. Very sensitive. Okay, so we have a couple of goals for twenty twenty four. Um, there's no increase in the sewer fees. There hasn't been an increase since twenty fourteen. Um, and just important to point out that the sewer operations are not funded by taxes. They're funded by the sewer user. Um, so this is an overview of our sewer operations. So you can see the EDUs that are that are left. Continuing with our goals, uh, we are relocating a sewer by uh, due to corrosion of the ridge on Big Ridge Drive, but we've been awarding a twenty thousand dollar grant for that to help with that relocation. Uh, pump station eight, that's the one that's across from Pocono Indian Museum is scheduled to be rehabilitated this year. Um, so we we are uh, actually hoping to begin that. And uh, maybe we'll hear more about it right within this meeting. Um, generators for pump station. Uh, this project has also been ongoing and the idea was to add generators to the pump stations so that everything keeps flowing, no pun intended, if there's a power outage. So um, the estimated cost was two hundred and seventy five thousand and the electrical portion was awarded to critical systems. And this is a picture of the work of our public works department. It saved money to use public works to do this rather than to have a contractor do it. Um, and then the, of course, the odor control system, that's something you could see I get all the glamorous tasks to present. The odor control um, is important when you have a a sewer to maintain. Um, and you'll hear more about that later in this meeting. We we still explore options to try and and do that. And now to get to the good part, the community and cultural center. So Holly Dennis, who manages that, will speak to that and I'm sure you'll go quickly to the regular slides.
Gotcha. Um, Holly is the one who's in the beginning of the fair. Here you can just see some of our overall what it's used for and some people we partner with. Our mission ultimately is a, you know, a place for good people to do their part.
Sorry.
Next, okay. You'll be here and seeing YouTube nineteen single events and six recurring events and recurring events can be weekly, monthly, et cetera. Um, all of them are more detailed, but we have line on these slides, but I think everyone has actually been here to date. Again, some more of the organizations we partner with, the White House, Collaborative Drive, we've had Allen's help whenever. In March, we're doing our Women's History Month exhibit. The opening reception will be Thursday, March seventh at five PM. You see, we had exhibit every month for the remainder of the year. Um, November, November, but we set up the tree lighting, so there are no exhibits for the club, but every other month booked. So we're honored and excited to be able to show these a lot. And events, we have a lot of story time. Everybody's taking a night away doing classes. It used to be AMR heat. We have cheer yoga, um, almost weekly. We have Tai Chi from the Offense Asian, which is starting on Thursday in April. The Friends of the South America National Revolution area are hosting several classes throughout the year. The first one is on April eleventh and then our next ride to Africa, July eighth, April twelfth. This is our annual Women's History Month exhibit. We have twenty local women artists who are going to be putting together the show in various media centers. Um, that work is powered through, well, there's, there's usually a video, uh, so we want to stop by, we're at seven, it feels over session. But it's always held during regular business hours, but you can stop by and. And our kiosks and our monitors are up and running. This was through a grant from that visitor bureau. The kiosk is currently being updated with this format to try to work better for what we needed to be, but it's still there. You can still play around with it. Um, and if you have any comments, questions or suggestions, when you play around with it, please feel free to let me know.
You could even have found tonight's meeting on there.
It is on there. Yes, and the calendar that is updated throughout that thing. So it is I want to do it at the.
Is there a bird flying above you there?
And then we are continuing to expand our hometown here um, and veteran memorial at a back community center. In twenty twenty three, we did get a grant from the Oklahoma Native Bureau, a nonprofit grant from DCEP to um, or not DCEP, the BIA Valley um, Chamber to do hometown hero banners. And then also we played a rock statue there and we have papers in the works to kind of round out the memorial at all the landscaping and this is in coordination with old veterans, recent boys out. And DCEP, you guys are at her, you can handle the community room. If you've been in there with a lot of people, you'll understand by that community. And we thought brands took on the learning of how to show that itself.
And that's it. That goes to God. Thank you. And you could be on the lookout because um, we set up the community and cultural center foundation like years ago and we've not peopled it yet. But um, that would also bust out that we're so busy with all of that. Um, and Chris, you are here representing golf.
Hi, uh, Chris Brain, the little guy is up for the golf committee. Uh, maybe presenting a couple of slides on what happened with Tyler, who's our golf manager who's not with us today.
He's fishing too.
Um, so there there was a uh, a we have gone down a little bit in rounds from uh, our during the pandemic year, but it was extremely high. But uh, we are still ahead of where we were pre pandemic. So it wasn't a pretty good year in twenty twenty, golf wise. Um, we're still, every year we have the same goal, it's to increase play by five percent, uh, increase revenue by five percent and reduce our expenses by five percent. Um, those are our membership prices for twenty twenty four. Um, there's the same singles and couples memberships. Uh, there's a discounted view, uh, add a membership before April first. And then there's also a five percent discount if you're a new member um, after uh, April first. Those are the twenty twenty four breaks for the golf course. A little bit, a couple of bucks for weekday play. Um, but mostly they're very similar to what they were last year. Uh, we have a couple of things that are scheduled um, already. Uh, Valer is going to be having their tournament in June. We're pre fire company is scheduled for September and uh, East Charlotte Little League is uh, going to be having their tournament. They have a big date yet.
Russ, are you going to help with the Valer golf tournament this year? All right. Thank you.
Um, Friday's scramble continues to be a success. Um, the numbers vary from week to week, but uh, Tyler had reported that he's seen a lot of interest in that event. Um, also he's uh, started a different league plays uh, to try to get some different groups to to come to the golf course. Um, so uh, part of my responsibility as golf liaison is to do marketing. So there's a list of uh, various things that we do throughout the year. Um, magazines, uh, social media, any blasts, uh, golf banners, uh, Google ads and all these things. We just use try to get the word out about the golf course. Um, for the year twenty twenty three, we had about twenty one thousand visits to the golf course. Percent of what Ross called home, um, twenty one thousand total gate views. Uh, you can see other uh, numbers there. It was a pretty active year on the website and as a community in general.
Aw, all right. So there's been a lot of inquiries regarding the golf course, James, and I've been feeling a lot of calls on that. So I'm hoping March, uh, we open bids. So there's nothing more to say about that.
Can you tell the amount of goods that there actually are?
We've not received any in hand yet. Usually they wait to the last uh, minute. You know, for them to come, but there's been, there's been a lot of interest in uh, in it and you James, what is that expression you use? It's something like you could tell the wookiee loose from the ones who are serious.
This is about the language they use.
Yeah, I mean, you you, you know.
Fire language. If they're asking technical questions, it's more fire language. I don't know if that's, it's really important.
Yeah, so it's the the quality of inquiries we're getting this time is a lot better than what we've received in the past. So fingers crossed. Okay, um, so. Okay, um so Holly, did you wanna, there's not much to say. Yeah, we'd like to do that.
Thanks, Holly.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So who's gonna, my, uh Vicki, are you going to cover all of zoning today?
Yeah, my impression.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, great.
I appreciate it.
So I know where you're next week.
Hey, it's next, let's hope, let's hope.
Hi, Vicki, I am in the zoning department. Um our goals for 2024, as you can see, the ordinances that have passed and the ones that we are looking to pass.
Yeah, it, it looks like the done on the bottom sort of fell off, but that is done also, the next one's a mark, this one was done. So, thank you, Vicki, oh, there it is. Oh, look at that. I didn't have to say.
This is a long day, this is a comparison of the uh different permits that were issued from uh February 22nd at 2020, January to February 22nd in 2022. Uh January, uh February in 2023 and January uh to February 2024, as you can see, they're pretty consistent. Our goals for uh 2024, uh since we've uh adopted the ordinance for property maintenance. Our overall goal is to look at the most phones and beautify the neighborhood and these are the uh highly trafficked groups for the problem problems and what we're looking for.
No, that's disgusting.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, disgusting, sorry. I know, I think, yeah.
Okay, so her, uh also our 2024, our goal is to make the permitting process user-friendly. And we're trying to get the, we're working on getting the permits online so that the um overall uh user can submit their applications. And if we need anything, we can upload their information on our website and they can follow our permit throughout the whole process. And we have our new, sort of new um programming system, our programming system, which is Tracer. And we, oh, we started, we met live in our, actually November of 2022. And we've done a lot of good things with it, we're, we started accepting credit card payments through Tracer. We're using the little hats in the field for violations and all that. We are talking short-term rental violations and complaints. And coming soon, we are going to do our online permit portal and the citizens reporter, and this is where um the residents can um submit their complaints and their concerns.
Well, so somebody like Mr. Tommy, you can then um instead of going to the notice about, not the, the request for action form, which is just, that's on our website, but you have to download the form, you have to fill it out, you have to either scan it or, and then email it back. With, with this system, the idea is you enter it and it goes right into a, a database. So this way they've got it on a spreadsheet, it's much more efficient.
Sorry, I don't need to be a downer, it's a step in the right direction, but for, I mean, we're putting messages here, we should have. Sorry.
Next, please.
There we go.
And here is the um comparison from 2021 to 2024, year to date, January to February for resale used on equipment permits that we have issued. Um you can see that it did spike in 2022, but it's kind of consistent. And there's the short-term rental licenses um year to date, January to February. It was enacted, well, the ordinance was passed in 2012.
Yeah, but you make a good point, April, it's that they were unregistered before.
Yes.
So the incre- the increase doesn't mean that you have that many more short-term rentals, we all know about them, the chains we can enforce. Or we can sack and do what we need to do with them. And Michelle, you are table.
I have a job.
Can you show us a recording secondary for planning?
Thank you, Michelle.
Has five plans in mind, one is a sketch plan, um so basically four, two are land developments. Um one is for personal care home, the other is with Marshall Square Shopping Center Retail. Uh two minor subdivisions, one is auto lane to split the uh parcel and the other is a private property. Right now it's basically meeting on outside um agency and getting revised comments back from applicants. So right now there is nothing to report, it was tabled this month and um they actually did cancel the meeting because they wanted to go for us to review. It's back to the house, I think, next month.
And we're still on Michelle because she is legal.
Legal, we have uh resolutions that were adopted, you can find them on the website under government, resolutions and ordinances. 2024, and we have one on the agenda tonight as well. Public notices, all public notices are uh placed in the open record article on the website. They're also put out in Baltimore. Mid notices, meeting notices, uh zoning hearing, more notices, everything is on the website.
Thanks, Michelle. The other part is legal.
Uh this is just a, a snapshot of everything that was uh received for open records. Uh in 2023, there were 202 film requests, um and mostly property zoning planning questions, um the smattering of other things.
Yeah, you could see from director first impressions, that's what everybody comes in for, the majority comes in for. And also the right to know. Chris, how, about how many do we have year to date for this year?
Uh Karen.
Yeah, not even the end of February, he's got thirty already. I'm most impressed with the time of completion. The overwhelming majority are completed in five days, so thank you for not taking the automatic extension on that. So now we're up to our emergency management coordinator. And Rachel will take us through emergency movements.
Hi, Rachel, I'm uh Sancho's emergency head and my coordinator. Um here you can see the three fire companies that cover Middle Smithfield. There are total calls for uh fire rescue um and QRS if they provide it. Um as well as the breakout for uh calls responded to just in Middle Smithfield Township. Um as well as the ambulance companies, um predominantly service by um Bushkill EMS. They have a suburban at Marshall Street Fire Company um with their tolls as well. Um, starting in the fourth quarter of 2022, um Middle Smithfield as well as Smithfield, the price and the order gap had worked uh jointly contracted with Jalen Associates um to provide uh an EMS and fire study. Um and that was uh completed during the fourth quarter of 2023 and uh give it back to those municipalities. Um they are now going over that, um and they are reconvening April to uh talk about what the findings were.
Thank you, Rachel. And now, whoops. There you go, you're still up. I guess so.
Um I'm also the Sancho Public Works Administrator. Um so these are a couple of projects that we have uh planned for this year. Uh we're gonna be doing work on municipal drives specifically at the corner to um cut base and fix uh drainage. Um that is located over there, um as well as when our cause road cut base and um that will be paved as well. Um cleanup, we're gonna be doing um a cleanup ramp which will offer residents um more days to be able to utilize um drop off. So it's not just the spring and fall cleanups. Um an MS four project located on Dry Pond Drive, which hopefully we've been able to start already um due to the winter not being as bad as what it usually is. Um and then just other uh shoulder work and creative projects throughout the township um to help maintain our locations. Uh that is the current paving list that we have for this year, um that could possibly be expanded on um as well.
Still reading.
And then recycling composting, um specifically at the Ocoee uh facility. Um that is open Monday through Saturday from seven to two, starting in April um through October 1st. It is staffed on Saturdays, um it is free for residents. Um and if you would like to uh be loaded for Marshall Post, um there is a time well or will be. Um and then those are just the dates for our legal action for this prior April 15th through May 10th. The fall after March 14th through December 6th. Um we also partner with uh the Twin Borough Recycling Center, um we go down and grind uh their materials twice a year. And then um our cleanup dates for applicable locations for here in Wooddale, uh seven to two all day in spring is April 25th through the 27th and then in the fall is October 11th and 12th.
Thank you, Rachel. Now we'll look to Jane.
That's me. Good evening to everybody on, thanks for everybody on the Economic Health uh Committee, we need you on, just and another fellow Economic Health Committee is uh is a reward for our business community and uh create a stable economic foundation for our businesses. Yes, please. Uh so what are our perpetual goals? We want to uh raise awareness of our businesses to our locals and our broader community. Uh so not just people who live in the township, but outside of township as well. Uh we also want to uh make our businesses aware of our EPC and what these sources we have. We magnify their advertising tablets by Angel Business Directory that we send to all of the uh town, town residents. Uh we also do varying cuttings, we promote businesses on our Facebook page, we also do a shop local campaign, mailings, counseling and more. We also have our local economic revitalization practice systems, which I can't do without what you have, but everybody else can do. Uh which is available for the development of businesses here in Township, um phasing in your increased taxes on uh property over about six years. We also have our useful renovation zones and uh we are looking forward to uh Mount Eagle Base Two coming very soon. Next slide. Uh in short, we want to get more business participation, the more consumers in the, in the, in life. Uh our shop local campaigns is, is an example of this, in 2022, we saw forty-five, over forty-five percent increase in business participation from the year prior. And this year, even uh almost seventeen percent more than last year. We're also have um feedback from our shop local beginning of Christmas in July, which helps, as you can see here, um bringing the revenue for their, their businesses within one day. So what are our goals for 2024? We continue to improve our business core, we're going to revitalize 209 campaign, which will include a canvassing uh this spring. We're going to expand improvements of our business directory, which gives exposure to all of our township residents. We increase, uh we increase business and community participation for our shop local programs, which will also include Christmas in July this year. We continue to fill vacancy in our township uh storefronts and closets. And we also are uh in the process of renewing our bird program. Over and over vitalized tool nine, that grant is open and is for businesses and properties on two and up to improve their building size, cleaning their interiors, uh streetscaping, random saving improvements. And we expect to see products developed uh this year.
Not to put you on the spot, but how much activity uh responsibly we see?
Well, we had eleven uh lots of ventures up till the last year and we have seen three of those materialize through applications and we expect to see three more materialized uh this month and next month.
One is finished.
Well, no, they're going, the project's gonna start in
Oh, I see.
The spring, yeah, because we just.
An example.
Yes, yeah, this is an example. Slide, we'll show you why. We have our, our finalized tool nine, you can see, we have actual micro problems with it today in the back, it's black and white, yeah. Uh but we're now accepting more applications for grants and our uh, our community proceeded this July, so we got to work reviewing all those letters of interest, um letters of interest, rather, uh spread the metrics to all of those and are now communicating with those letters of interest and getting those applications. So uh anyone else show them? 2023, we saw thirteen businesses in one year, so far this year we have two. And we just received word uh this week that we'll be expecting another one. Uh we do expect uh developments with Marshall Square Complex as well as the apartments of uh Mount Eagle, so all great things coming.
Thank you, James. Any questions? All right, we love to be historical ladies on, that would be Holly. We keep these mission statements up here just for the folks at home.
Um our aim goal is to, you know, recognize local history, preserve it and educate our residents in just gain interest in some of the authority that I have here.
I believe that, I can't see it, but I think our chairperson zoomed in.
Our goal is continue to expand relationships with public interests. Finalize the topic micro program um for God's admission. We do have a couple that need to be kind of expanded upon or who definitely finalize a program, but this is for local minorities who think that aren't necessarily um able to repeat gate workers, but it still should be recognized. Uh we're expanding our Marshall Street Slow Memorial, the plans for that will be coming later this year on the 15th anniversary. And we're continuing to build the archives with people that are sending in photos, we are recording no residents, um so far we have recorded our own member Val Huffman over several sessions, so the recordings are gonna be edited together and available for people to look into as well. So up the event, anniversaries, ones that we recognize every year, the 60th anniversary of Mars pretty important in this June. The 25th in August, member makers, which is always held in August, and then the Marshall Street back down is held on Focal Day, which is in mid October. And for member makers this year, we talk again. This is really good constitution. Next. So we're in a conversation with the Rangtry, that is, again, on our anniversary. Need to exhibit over the communities that are putting on and also, thanks to Ohio and, and Ohio and us here. Marshall Street, my favorite.
And Danny, this slide's for you. We have Danny Younger with us tonight, who attends many of our historical commission meetings.
Providing occasion and occasion to bring our study animals right by.
Yeah, so we appreciate it because a lot, a lot of that is for the marker program and I think it would be quite useful so that we can actually small for so. Thank you, Holly. Okay, now we're back to Chris on Parks and Recreation. Oh, Carrie, she, oh, I'm sorry, oh, there she is. Now everyone's gonna see it. Oh, Carrie, did you?
I'm sorry, I was still muted. Thank you, Holly, for the presentation.
You're welcome, Carrie.
Have a good one.
Okay, thank you for seeing that, Michelle. What are Chris's thoughts?
Parks Recreation. Alright, so some goals for the Sancho Park Recreation Park this year, um we are looking for improvements to the Razzica Falls trail. Um this is a plan that was developed by the Marrow High Planning Commission in 2022, I was slipped in for a. Uh, I was given for a thirty-two hundred dollar grant from one branch here to help fund it, as it includes new science in the parking lot. And along the trails to uh let the public know where the public access trails are, and also to help direct people who are visiting falls toward the trails and away from the camping areas, which is off limits to visitors. Um, we're also looking into investigating some other uh potential parks improvements, including new equipment and some other things that will, that the committee will be discussing this year. Um, we also look forward to planning our four public events, and uh we are looking at potentially expanding our tree lighting from the holiday market, but more information on that later in the year. Um, as always, we love to increase our community involvement by increasing attendance to our events and our general visitation for parks. And uh also increasing our event sponsorships, uh more about that in a minute. Uh, we also always try to pursue grant funding for all of our projects, so including the, as I mentioned, the rest of the falls uh hiking trails. And in the event that we put in on new features, such as playground equipment, we would look for grant funding for those projects as well. And a couple of pictures up there, we have some pictures of our, some of our volunteers here, and then also uh in twenty twenty-three, we reefered the trails at the community gardens and at Echo Lake Park, um both of which were covered by grant funding. These are uh the days for twenty twenty-four Parks and Recreation events. Um, we have our startup P S R coming up in one month from tomorrow at on uh March twenty-third. Uh, we also have Community Day in July, Tree in October, tree lighting is November thirtieth. We also have a dog training with our uh local dog trainer, David the Dog Trainer. Um, he will be at uh the dog park on Saturday, June sixteen. Uh, and also dates to be announced, uh Vicki, our our wonderful beekeeper at Community Gardens, will be doing uh public beekeeping demonstrations. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Committee doubles as the litter cleaning committee. Um, they do two uh volunteer cleanup events every year, one in April, one in September, those are the dates up there. Uh, the volunteers are uh able and encouraged to participate any time that they would like. Uh, we also have our adopt the road program, uh so people can adopt since they've driven the road in there. Uh, we ask them to clean out at least twice a year, but again, they can clean out as many times as they want, whatever they want. Um, we, so as always, uh we hope to get some new roads adopted uh in twenty twenty-four and to maintain uh the high community involvement we have in our litter cleanup program. And uh as I mentioned before, uh we have our sponsors, uh so thank you to our twenty twenty-three sponsors. Our sponsors include all the sponsors for the parks events, as well as many of Holly's events, um for member makers and for the year. And so we thank them for supporting us, because without them, uh we would not be able to do all of the events that we do.
Yes, thank you for all the supervision. Okay, so that's it um for tonight. Get involved, get engaged, we have openings. So, thank you very much to the staff for putting this together. We appreciate all we do, and in August, we have a mid-year report, so these are the goals that we set. Um, and in August, you'll get, it's like report card time, you'll get to see how we did with our, with our goals for this year. And then, at the end of the year, there's a a tiny year end that goes along with the budget presentation. So, so that's it, thank you, staff, for doing this, what a great job. How about you folks on Zoom, anybody have any comments? All right. So, thank you elected officials for coming. Would anyone like a brief recess to use the facilities? Okay, all right. See you later. They might can get out the rest. All right. Well, thank you again. Yep, treasure. This is the money part.
Uh, making motion from our Gerald account, seventy-six thousand seventy-two dollars and twenty-four cents, sir.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion from our zero count, seventy-eight thousand eight hundred twenty-one dollars fifty-four cents.
On second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion for our government, one thousand six hundred twenty dollars and twenty-five cents, sir.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Motion for our field account, forty-three thousand ninety-three dollars and six cents.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? Okay. Yeah. Solicitor's report.
No, there's one under, listed under my report, and that's the procedure for the disbursement of funds from EMS tax revenue. If you recall, I prepared a very similar resolution for the buyer tax revenue at your last meeting, and it's my understanding that the township wanted to kind of digest it a little bit and discuss it with the departments. I assume it's gonna be the same for the EMS, uh but given the brief conversation last meeting, I don't know if it'd be appropriate for me to at least put a form, a base form resolution together and circulate it to the board, so you have it for the EMS tax distribution as well. Uh, so I don't, unless I'm mistaken, I don't know if you're in a position to take any action or plug in those blanks tonight. Uh, so that's, that's the only thing under my agenda this evening. I'll probably have some comments or uh guidance on some additional items later on in the agenda, but unless there's anything else from the board for me at this time, that's all I have.
We haven't had a chance to, if you need to do that, I don't know.
Understood.
Thank you for doing the ones. Um, all right, nature's report, and I have a whole folder to leave.
Alright, uh.
Today.
Yeah, so uh one thing was uh to be discussed tonight, and that's, uh you kind of alluded to it earlier. Your head over with the odor control. Um, and so it's a uh proposal from a new water technologies. Uh, it's essentially for a, uh it's a little over a one-week trial. Uh, they're scheduled, assuming that you are excited on this proposal, they have it slated to start next Friday, so March first. With a a drop-off, and then basically we go on a following week, and if you pick it up, uh, you know, the Monday, almost a week and a half later. Um, the trial itself, so the price for it is eighty-five hundred, they bring the trailer up, I think they're located out of Virginia. Uh, all the equipments located on that, they basically park it by uh pump station five, so it'd be the one right over here uh by the jug handle. And um essentially, the way the contract's set up, again, they're gonna, they're gonna run the trial, they're gonna have people uh here that essentially operated are taking um readings at downstream pump station locations to just uh confirm uh the performance of the system. This is, the the intent of the system is to basically inject um oxygen into uh the sewer line, which helps to keep odors down, and that that should carry down to pump stations uh downstream of it. Uh, the current odor system that the township has in place, uh where it's located and just the way that it works. You've just been experiencing where, you know, the effectiveness has tapered off at certain spots, and you know, you guys are trying to alleviate that, so. Um, again, they're gonna do the trial for about a week, they expect to have a report with their conclusions three to four weeks after. Uh, I've been in conversation with them along with the processor, uh to just have everything squared away going into the uh the trial. Um, I know Pat uh was giving the proposal, town actually needs to look at it, and he had mentioned to me maybe a couple of things that he had noted.
Yeah, I mean, if the, if the board's uh, if you're in a position to move on this tonight, uh it would just be conditional upon me, I guess I can circulate an email to Ben. Uh, one, it's just, uh, you see a lot of stuff about confidentiality, you still have to comply with the right to know law in the event that this is a request. Um, the electrician, uh just be aware of, uh it looks like they're requesting or having the township responsible for providing electrician at the site.
Yeah, and that was something I'm, I'm checking with them on, I think that was only in the case that it wasn't gonna run off the generator, so if they had to actually tie it to an existing. Correct, yes, I reached out to Critical Systems, got a price for basically a generator.
And this is how much?
Um, it's uh just around three thousand dollars for the week and a half for Critical Systems.
That's this.
Correct, I believe so, yeah.
So that's thirty-two hundred plus the eighty-five.
Correct.
For one week.
Correct, the eighty-five hundred, um if you went forward with this, would get credited towards the uh purchase of the system in the long term.
We decided to go with it.
If you decided to go with it, yeah.
If it works.
Correct. So, um, I know like the other sewer means we had kicked around our options with it. You know, another bioxide location is over a hundred thousand dollars for them to set that up, along with the ongoing. You know, uh, chemical costs that you guys are currently paying a decent amount for. The nice thing with this is that, you know, it might be more upfront cost given in, but it's relatively low on the ongoing costs. So, um, it's, it's one that was referred, you know, to us by Prosser, they dealt with them in cover of township, seemed like they had a successful trial there for a very similar application. I reviewed uh another one of their reports from a similar system that they had done a trial on. Uh, you know, we're, there's some constraints in the township, just given the types of sewer lines that we have, the location of the pump stations, or, you know, trying to find something that that works well. Um, and I, I did check with Prosser to see if there was another way that they could tie in the trailer to not avoid the need for the generator, but unfortunately with the service that's need and the type of generator that we have, it, it wasn't gonna work, so. I don't think I have anything else to know other than that, um, so the proposal's through anew. If you were to decide to go forward with it, Kirchner is the local supplier, they aren't, those are approved. So this isn't something that would require like going out to bid for if it got to that point. Um, and they've been involved in the conversations as well and visited the site, and are, are familiar with the system and everything, so. Now, okay, any questions for me on this?
Can you walk through again how that you're going to determine whether or not it worked? Like, how do you measure?
Right, so they are sending, it's called an odor log, um, that's, they're gonna be basically shipping it overnight, I think tomorrow it'll be finished calibrating, but Prosser should be getting that so they can set that. Um, and pump station four, we're basically gonna have, you know, a full week plus of uh hydrogen sulfide levels being measured uh there. So basically, what's the concentration of the gases that produce the odors? Um, you know, there'll be a short time where we'll take the bioxide off, probably, probably a couple of these or whatever before their system kicks in. You'll basically have the week of them operating the system. I, I think like at the midpoint, they shut their system off for like uh twelve, eighteen hours. Might see, you'll see like the spike come up, then they turn their system back on, and so there'll be a clear data point of where baseline is. Um, where their system is operating at, so you'll have something to point to. We have some historical data from Evoqua that they've given us from, you know, them going on checking odors while their system's been in place, so. We want to say, here's where concentrations were at in this trial, here's where it was at with biocides in, and here's roughly where it is with no treatment at all. And it'll give you a, a pretty good indication of how it compares.
Okay, thank you. What did you think of the contract?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a proposal for a, it's, it's not, I'm assuming there's gonna be another more extensive contract in the event you proceed with the actual purchase of the system. This is for a one-week trial, so to speak. So I mean, like I said, the electrician, the right to know, we gotta mention, uh it does reference, you know, if there's any delay uh of the installation of the pre-pilot, that it's a twelve hundred dollar fee per day. So I would just suggest, you know, make sure we know exactly what they need before they get there, and just some other items with their warranty, but nothing, I mean, remember, this is just a one-time pilot test.
Looking at this short is, it's a five-day test, and it's Monday through Friday. The problem is more.
On weekends?
On weekends.
Okay, yeah, I can, um, I was, I was going through with them on the specifics, I think he was planning to be hooking up the bachelor stuff the Sunday before, but aims to start it on Monday. But I can certainly check with them on that, see if there's, I, I, I didn't get definitive when the shutdown was occurring, so let me check. Right, yeah, okay.
So, you know, I mean, I would recommend Wednesday through Sunday, if they're gonna do five days. Or we take the two additional days, or was it twelve and all of the day or something? You're gonna say, I mean, it's mostly on the weekends, it's like driving to Elizabeth and Jersey, I mean, it's pretty hard. I mean, really is.
Okay.
So another twenty-four hundred dollars.
Right.
Well, I'll check with them, I'll see what.
But I mean, it's already close to twelve.
So, and you're, is there, is there a difference between Saturday or Sunday, like, like, is there, like, I mean, I, I don't hear that out there sniffing this thing twenty-four hours in document, but it's.
So you voted.
Right.
I think a lot of people know this.
They definitely have these more covered, they really do.
Okay.
And whether it's because it's more users, you know, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
Uh, I, again, I think it's mostly. So.
Yeah.
Like, take either Wednesday through Sunday, or just two days.
I, I mean, I, I could see that, could, I think a big part of the issue that we have is that, you know, in a lot of these residential uh subdivisions, we have low-pressure sewer lines, and so if people are not home throughout the entire day during the week.
Right.
Those lines are not getting essentially flushed.
Correct.
With enough regularity, so I wouldn't be surprised if come the weekend, there's a slug basically works its way through.
Mm-hmm.
Um, all right, well, let me talk to them about that, uh, and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Yeah, they're on.
Okay, so there is no old business that brings us.
I guess, I guess the action on that would be.
Well, the action would be for you to find out.
Well.
I would wanna find out about this first.
Oh, what?
Uh, well, are we going to spend another twenty-four hundred dollars? Are we able to get Wednesday through Sunday?
Uh, I mean, I don't know what your thoughts are, Pat, like, is there a way that we can kind of condition it?
Yeah. Um, if the board knows what it wants, you can make it a conditional upon either, either altering the start and end date, the Wednesday and Sunday, or if they can't do that for some reason, if it would just be extending it for two days not to exceed an additional X amount of money, you can make, you can consider that motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
So, motion second, any comments or questions?
Changing it.
All in favor?
Yeah, awesome. Uh, and then, uh, with that, it'll just be against coordinating with Kylie or Joan, and she's up for the, the purchase order associated with that, so.
And I'll put Ben, I'll put Ben an email with just a very brief list of the comments that I kind of want to throw right at the line.
Perfect, that's, that's perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, they're on.
Um, all right, so more business. This one's you, Mark.
Yep, we got a small joint, you need um resolution zero two twenty twenty-four dash two, join your deed for Vladimir aboard for a pro.
Sir.
Any comments or questions? All in favor? You want? Okay. Would you like to make this one?
Make a motion to alter the sale of the forty-foot trailer to put it on my estimate.
Second, thank you. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye. Aye. We have to get rid of the ace duty in our brace, we have to.
All right, I think the next one's you.
Yep, I take uh a lot of pleasure in appointing Carrie Wetherby to the middle of. Yep, I take uh a lot of pleasure in appointing Carrie Weatherby to the Middlesbrough Township Planning Commission for a four-year term.
And I take great pleasure in seconding that.
I would have done Carrie, this is.
We should watch it. Should watch it. All right, a motion and a second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so then. Um, we have vacancies for the alternates. And Michelle, you read the verbiage on that, how many alternates are allowed?
All it was up to planning, I think it was up to three. Uh, there's a meeting, so there's three vacancies.
So I don't know if the planning commission has the, well, no, you, you canceled your last meeting, no, you're correct, yeah. So.
We'll discuss, I don't know that we need three alternates. I've never had a problem coming at car. So basically the alternate gets seated if somebody doesn't come. Uh, and in order to be an alternate, you sort of need to be there at every meeting, so you know, you keep pace with what's going on. To have three seems to be able to talk.
Do the planning commission, did they have a chance to discuss it? Um, or did you want to answer? Yeah, did you want to table this until you had a chance?
Make a motion to table the holding of the appointment.
Sir.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we saw this tonight, um, first of all, joint submission for the One for Nature grant, and we hear the ratified. Do you want to make a motion to rat?
I'll make a motion.
On second, um, this is, this is what was the amount, thirty five?
Two fifty.
Thirty two fifty, I knew it was close to that. Um, so that he could do the improvements to the trails around Ratsaka Falls. So a motion and second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then this one is for Holly. Um, I would make a motion to uh adopt the revised Whispering Pines rental agreement.
Sir.
Um, so what was revised here was a change in rate. Um, had, had some revision.
Yeah, so Michelle and I were talking, I think the one in the packet may still be uh the old version of the agreement. So if your motion is simply to proceed with amending the agreement for the rates uh consistent with the latest version of the agreement, I think we can make sure that the, the most recent, yeah, yeah.
I think that's what she said.
Yeah, sure.
Um, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Getting close to the end now, though.
Yeah. Think this one's you.
I'll make a motion that would be uh by alert for Smithville Township's outstation, the improver that part with which we will be donating our frisbee dog cages as an in-kind donated box.
Second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Go Thomas.
And all the circle of public left. Anybody on Zoom have any public comment? Anyone? In the audience?
Always both.
All right.
So we were describing both of you here.
So.
All in favor? All right.
Yes, they're all over the animal, sixteen, thirteen. Nice job, man, you're staying very nice, so don't be honest.